We would like to call the work session to order. We have a revised work session and the first item is going to be the WARMA collaborative contracting discussion with Robert Davis from WARMA. Heather Kirkro just distributed the general contract terms for RFP process.
Yes.
Can you all hear him?
No, he doesn't have it on.
Oh, that would help.
Well, it's green now. So I just want to go over a little bit of the history. WARMA was, under an Enabling Act in Michigan law, formed an authority. What we did to start it was we just went around and canvassed local jurisdictions within Washtenaw County and said, hey, would you like to get together? We're talking about trying to put together an authority for purposes of contracting and doing other things with collaborative work among communities for trash hauling, recycling, and composting. And so we spent about a year trying to figure out what that authority would look like and we spent about six months trying to name the darn thing, which never came out. WARMA is just kind of an acronym. But we have, since then, we've been receiving grants. We've been doing a lot of work on the messaging with respect to recyclables. We've been going through studies. We've participated in grant programs that gave us money to do studies on the cleanliness of the recyclables in the various communities, trying to put together a consistent message among the communities for what is and what is not recyclable. We still go community to community at meetings and we talk and we'll say, Ryan, what's recyclable? And we'll ask Heather what's recyclable and we still don't, we're not always on the same page as to what's recyclable. So we figure the community residents are probably not exactly on the same page all the time with what is recyclable. So we're working hard on that message. In the meantime, one of the other things that authority can do is they can go out for an RFP and test the market as a group as opposed to testing the market individually for rates. So right now, we're in the process of looking at what would a contract look like if we were able to do that? And I've given you just a draft of what we think a contract might look like. But what we would like to do is get a group of communities within the WARMA Authority organization whose contracts are coming up in the near future or, you know, timed sort of similar, put them together as a block and put out a comprehensive proposal and see what the market would yield if we bid out the work as a group as opposed to everyone going at it individually. And so that's what we are working on right now. The contract you have is nothing in gold. It's just an example of what a formatted contract might look like. But here's what we've been doing for purposes of going out for these RFPs. And I just finished one in Van Buren Township. If you saw, they went out for an RFP on their waste issues. Is what we're doing, and I did with the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority for 34 communities up north at the tail end of last year, we kind of in the RFP now, we put the contract terms that we're probably going to want you to sign if in fact we award the work to you. And so we try to give them upfront, look at what a contract's going to look like. So we don't go through this whole RFP process. We don't go through the interviews. We don't go through all the negotiations, only to find they will not sign a contract. So we're trying now to give contracts upfront. So with WARMA, I've put together what a model contract might look like. But in the RFP, if you pull up the RFP process that Van Buren used, I think it's online, you can see how the RFP was tailored after model terms. So the purpose that I'm here tonight to answer your questions on or discuss is would the township want to participate in that process of going out for an RFP for waste-related services as part of a group within the WARMA organization? What would be the timing and how would that work? And what would be your questions on that process? So that is why I'm here tonight to talk about that. I think most of you know I represent the SACRA Authority. I represent the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority. I have a decent amount of experience with sewer authorities. I have a decent amount of experience with transportation authorities. I do think, I really do think, that in the long run, working together with a group of communities does produce better financial results. I do know that in one of the contracting sessions for SACRA, which is 13 communities from Birmingham South, the southern Oakland County communities, that when we got together as a group and we made a decision to get rid of the boundary lines between the communities as we bid the work out, so we bid it out in blocks that weren't necessarily driven by the community boundary line. So a truck would get to the end of one community and say, oops, I got to turn around. You know, I'm not allowed in the other community. So when we went out in that regard, our rates went down 16%. When the little magic box that these collection companies use, their rate optimization box, when they were able to plug in rate optimization and not have to stop at the end of a community boundary, their efficiencies went up and our rates went down. So that's what we're looking to talk about tonight and I would answer any questions that you might have. We're not, and by the way, I'm not trying to bind anything tonight. I'm not saying if you do this, you know, you're going to be bound in any way. This is just, the next logical step among the group is to see if we can gain some power in the market by being a group.
I know when WARMA was created, that was the idea, to have a regional, you know, bid. There was a lot of questions. Heather and Stan and I met with Theo. So we had a lot of questions, but that's a detail that would come after we have something to bid out, right?
Right. So what we would be doing next if, and again, you're not bound by anything, if we could use, you know, we're trying to gather five, six communities who are ready for new contracts anyways, and put together an RFP for you to look at, just so you could look at what an RFP would look like if you were part of it and who you would be bidding with and what the terms would look like.
Ours isn't up till 2025.
Correct.
You know that.
Correct.
With waste management, yeah.
Correct. Yeah. And that's, and we're looking at that timing. I've been, I've been in Dexter. I've been in all the communities talking about this. Pittsfield is kind of ready to go. They're getting anxious to go. So everybody's anxious to see what this document would look like, but I have to finalize who's going to be in on the first grouping and how can I format this out. Again, if you, if you do take a look at the one I recently did, I think you would get a sense of what the format might look like. But this is just to get your thoughts and your concerns and actually just a willingness to participate in reviewing this, if we can put it together, if you would be interested, knowing that your deal is not up until 2025.
Questions or comments?
Madam Chair, ma'am. So thank you for this. I do have a small question. And I see the value in being grouped together. That might potentially be a win for everyone. But should conditions change or circumstances change, what happens if someone, one of the participants would want to opt out? Is there any plan for that or is there any allowance for that? How might that work?
So, good question, not a small question, good question. The statute, and I was involved in this, in SACRA, over a long period of time, it was the same members and somebody wanted out. And there really was no mechanism in the statute for how to withdraw and what would be the process for a community that wanted to withdraw after years being part of an authority. And now there is. And so that process would be in the contract because we're enabled under that statute. There is a withdrawal provision in the statute now that has to be followed.
Is that here in this packet here?
No. I didn't include the enabling law with you. But the enabling law would be, would be referenced in the, in the RFP. And I can shoot you, Mr. Hunter, a copy of that law and I'll circle the withdrawal provision for you.
Thank you.
It's a rather short statute. I know, I know your lawyer probably has it handy as well. You know, we all, as younger lawyers, we all aspire to be Mr. Winters when we, when we get a little more experience under our belt. Right, Doug?
Yeah, that's right.
Right?
Thank you.
Other, yes. John?
Oh, yes. I guess I have two questions and maybe I haven't seen it yet. How long would the contract be with the communities?
So, good question. We, we find, we find over time that contractors give better rates when you're at 10. But we find over time municipalities don't like 10 because it's a long time to bind a community. So we've been doing five and five. And here's, John, what I can say about that. In the last one that I did at the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, it was 34 communities that ranged from very urban, highly dense to very rural communities. Trying to put them together in one document was, was interesting. But we got it done. And, and one of the things that we did was we did a five and a five, right? And then we had two contract reopeners per five years. So there was two times that a community could trigger a re opener each five-year block.
So after the first five, then?
Right.
Okay. They could renew.
But, but I guess, I guess the flip side of it is from the service provider standpoint, that the amortization of the equipment that they buy to service these accounts, you know, 10 works better for them in terms of recouping the investment. For example, in some of the communities up north, we, we were working with waste management as one of the folks up there. And we wanted all the trucks over, over a decently short amount of time to convert to natural gas. And we were able to achieve that, but that's a heavy investment, right? And so obviously, they were looking for years to recoup that initial expense.
And the other question is, if you could just think offhand, what would be the benefit of WRRMA over who we have now? What additional services or what better services do you offer?
Well, there's a couple of things that, that authorities provide. What's the benefit of being an authority contract as opposed to on your own? Number one and foremost, I hope you're going to get better rates. Number two, contract administration, we, in the authorities, we have an entity now that, that manages the contract and takes a burden off of some of the staff.
The authority?
The authority. So all those fun phone calls that, that you get, the authority, for example, SACRA, has taken over, you know, those and so has Mid-Michigan.
Okay.
So there is a relief of that. And then, you know, hopefully, over time, you notice there are less trucks on your road overall, because even though a truck may not be collecting in your community, they're certainly passing through your community from other communities. So we have found over time that we're getting less trucks on the road overall if we're, if we're working together as a block. So first and foremost, I, you know, I don't mean to place all the emphasis on money, but it normally, it normally, they're attracted to these accounts because they, they tend to be decent length and it's a larger group, so more households. And then, and then contract administration is also a benefit.
But not sacrificing quality of service?
No. No. In fact, in fact, John, I would say this, that I, I was, I would be happy to forward all of you the, just the contract, because of public record now for up north, what we were able to achieve in terms of the contract language that I'm sure is not in your current contract. We have liquidated damages provisions. We have stipulated penalties for certain events. We have all kinds of dispute resolution mechanisms. We have a favored nations clause. Favored nations being, we have a clause in the contract that says, hey, you're, you're working for us. If, if you get another contract throughout our term that is, is better priced than ours, you got to tell us so we can negotiate down to those terms. And I think what you're able to do, John, is you're able to get more into the contract than you would if you were by yourself.
Okay. Makes sense. And that, one more question. Why would a municipality opt out for?
I, I want to say politics, but I shouldn't say that.
It's, yeah?
It, it, you would think it would be because they've determined they can do better on their own and that the authority relationship no longer benefits them. That would make sense. And I think that's the way, if you read what I'm going to send you, the withdrawal provision, I think that's the lead in to that provision. If you believe that the authority is no longer providing the benefit, you should be able to get out. And I, I think Ryan hit on that. You should be able to, you should be able to get out. I've only seen it happen once, John, and that was Madison Heights exiting from SACRA. But I do believe there was a lot more going on in that relationship.
Yeah. I'm trying to think back if there was some sort of story.
There may have been.
Yeah.
I'm sure there was. There was a, there was a time in, in those authority meetings, which I attend every month, where we strongly debated the motion to adjourn. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for coming and sharing this with us. I have a couple of questions just about what this does to, like, I don't know, the market, like what you, what you'd call it, but like, there's a lot that I can see in the power that happens with the communities coming together. There's also a lot of power in the company that gets awarded that contract, right? So people feel like initially, oh, it's going to be great. And then if other companies can't do the work because the work's being tied up with these larger contracts, it sometimes can leave a community with no other option after because of what happens when, you know, these are companies that are overhead-heavy. So, and it's jobs and it's those kinds of things. So I'm wondering, like, when this happens, like, how many, I don't know how many different companies in this area are providing this service? And then what is the impact? Because, you know, with the recent storms and stuff, people are unhappy with one particular company holding all that. And when this unhappiness happens, then they want something else, but it's really hard to create something else if you're beholden to the big player. So that's kind of my question. Like, these big contracts are going to maybe eliminate some maybe smaller companies, maybe or even local employees and those type of things. And so what happens?
Big contracts, big players, right?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying. I would, I would agree there's a good premise for that question because in, in, in recent times, it does seem like the same players are responding to all of these bigger proposals. So I agree with the premise of your question. When we were, when we were putting together the last renewal contract for SACRA, I had, I had somebody in the hallway really come hard at me about, you know, that you're just going to, why are we even talking about this? You're just going to pick one of the big companies and we're all going to get wiped out and, you know? And that's exactly what did not happen. So, I mean, in your, in your area over here, do you get, do you ever see any bids from No, because it's a small company and I have them doing Troy. They predominantly service Troy, which is one of the 13 cities in SACRA. Have you ever heard of car trucking in this, in this area? Not a household name, right? I have them doing five of the 13 communities in SACRA. Now, I do have GFL who took over for Rizzo. So I do have one of the bigger players. In, in the Mid-Michigan, it turned out to be, a contract got split up. We didn't get one. And we ended up with part of the communities being handled by waste management and part being handled by GF, or I'm sorry, Priority Waste, whose name you're hearing a little more now, Priority Waste. So it, it's not always the big players who have been winning these, these contracts. And I would suggest to you that if in fact, you know, there is a dissatisfaction and you had to terminate one of these bigger players, there are people out there who will take these accounts pretty quickly. And so there is some substitutions that are available.
So the authority has the ability to not award it to one particular company.
Yes. And I, and that was, Mid-Michigan Waste Authority had always used one. And so when I started working with them, I said, you know, you don't have to just do one, you know? If, if, for example, peculiarities, you're going to have peculiarities that you might want, you're going to want in your contract. And we've talked about some of those things that are unique to each community. So if you go up north, for whatever reason, and you're in Frankenmuth, you will never see a cart. The next time you go for that chicken dinner, tell me if you see a cart. They do, they absolutely do not want carts, all bags. And then, and then most of the time, you'll, you'll go to communities, all they want is carts, right?
We didn't have a choice.
Yeah. So, so, so we had to account for that in the contract. So there was a, you know, when I started looking at the rates, I mean, priority and waste weren't the same with how they would handle non-cart communities. And some of the rural communities, they don't want carts because their driveway's 9,000 feet long and, and, you know, then, then the cart's sitting along a highway, right? So they, they just want bags. So we account for all those in this, in this contract that we put together. But if, if it takes, if it takes three providers to make the 13 communities in SACRA happy and at the best rates, then we're using three. And we're currently using three. Yeah.
And then with the authority, I had a couple of questions about the authority because we have examples in our community where authorities have been really good for us. And we have some examples where maybe the authorities, we got into it, it was a good idea, but then in the midst of it, maybe we didn't have the representation that we thought we should have. So does, do the communities have any representation? Like, is there a board with the advisory or?
So the way, the way, the way we structure them would be that each community, the legislative body, appoints a member to be on the board and an alternate to be on the board. You already have done that in the WARMA organization. You already have appointed a rep and an alternate. And so that's what, and that would form the authority board. So the authority board would then meet and carry out the business of the authority once a month at, at an authority board meeting. And your rep would then report back to you. Certain decisions end up back at the legislative body as a check and balance. And we have, we have, I've never had a situation where an appointed board member somehow went rogue on the community. I've never, never experienced that. But yeah, you have representation. So then your next question, Debbie, is, well, what's our voting power? Because I knew you were going to ask that. And then the, the power, we try to, we, we try to do it, one vote per community, per member of the authority. And then, and then some of the authorities have changed over time that the voting power lies with the percentage of the waste generated. So in other words.
Ann Arbor.
Yeah, but, but you know what?
It's not the current rules.
No. And Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor is not going to be part of this in terms of this RFP.
For recycling? I thought they opted in.
They are, they are not going to be part of this for purposes of the RFP process. That's what, that's what I've been advised.
Is that with the, oh, they were? Oh, I thought he said they were.
So, but I understand what your point was going to be is that, and I remember, I remember speaking in front of Ann Arbor about that issue and, and yes, Brenda, they, they were, they were pretty strong about them, you know, having the most to say. Imagine that. So they are not going to be involved in this, in this current process.
But they joined WARMA.
They joined WARMA because they agree, they agree with the premise and they agree with what they've been benefiting on the common messaging for recycling. And they believe that that has helped the recycling in their communities. So the other thing I put in the contract up north, and I, and I want you to hold on to this thought, was a recycling profit sharing back to the communities. So I made, I made them bid, we made them bid a profit sharing on the recyclables back to the communities. I think recycling is a great thing. I think, I think we all support it. I think we can all say right here, we support recycling. There is a mistrust about recycling. I think that permeates all communities. There's some people, there's a group that'll say, it doesn't happen, it's just a myth, it all goes to the landfill, right? And there's some who are very, very good believers in recycling. But in the middle is the majority. And if you can show that the recycling creates a benefit to the community, I don't care how big, how small, I think that having a profit sharing on the marketability of the recycled materials back to the community in the form of money is a good thing.
Any other questions? This is just for discussion?
Yep. Yep.
So I was wondering, I saw that it said like what composting was. So with the recent storms, one of the real dilemmas we have is like, what do we do? How do we get out there and take care of that? Is there any part of the contract that you have right now that helps the communities with that?
Yeah. So if you remember, was it 2011, the 696 corridor on the, on the Oakland County side, it was devastated and the trash volume went, you know, it just went crazy. And so there are mechanisms in there to address those issues. In fact, I had to get governor approval to have a temporary transfer station near the state fairgrounds to accommodate that waste stream. So, so the real contract provision, Debbie, that you're asking about though mandates, and, and you'll read this, that it doesn't matter what the volume of the waste is, you pick it up. Okay? So any and all trash put out for collection by Brenda, you pick it up. Once in a while, we'll get some complaints about the yard waste because there are some time periods where you go buy a house and there's like 90 bags. And we'll get a call from the contractor and I'll say, the contract says you pick it up, pick it up. So it's not a volume-based contract, it's an all pickup contract. Doug, come on. You got to have something.
I do. Actually, I was trying to remember how many communities actually belong to WARMA right now. And since the last time we met, what's the total number that we have now?
You know, I'm not, I don't want to guess on this, but I think it's, I think it's nine, eight or nine, yeah.
The reason why I ask is because on the funding end of it, a lot of the townships have different millage cycles, obviously, as to when we renew.
Right. Right.
Some actually may pay it out of the general fund by cities having authority to levy taxes greater than townships. But I guess my concern has been over the years, watching, I don't want to use the word, phrase bid rigging or anything like that, but the concern lies with, would you anticipate there being one master bidder that would bid for the entire nine communities and then that master bidding, master bidder having the authority to subcontract out certain parts of that contract? Because I'm just concerned about just how.
So Doug, I want you, I'm going to, I want to show you in the, in the most recent contract, I I did, the anti-subcontracting provision that is in there. We also have a provision in there that if a company is sold, and we define what that means, that we have a right to go to a new bid because we don't have to be forced to live with a new company. So I, 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 I know exactly what you're talking about. But, and, and the third answer is, is that once the RFPs are, are back, we reserve the right to carve it up the way we want to carve it up. You know, the authority, the authority, when it's reviewing the RFPs can say, okay, so we see, we see the cart prices offered by X. Well, we, we want to have that company focus on these four communities, but we want, we like the pricing structure for the other on these communities. So, so the allocation of the contract is somewhat within the control of the authority, which is you.
There's always the devil's in the details. I just kind of release.
A hundred percent. I could not agree more, and that's, fortunately or unfortunately, I think if you look at the, the up north contract, I, I, Doug, I think I might have hit 50 pages. So there's a lot of detail. Am I at my time limit? Is the buzzer going to go off?
Yes. But basically, I think what's going to happen, it just, Bob, is that okay to call you Bob?
Brenda, Bob is good.
You'll, you'll come back after chatting with our attorney and bring something back. I do know that, my understanding from the meeting is, we will, we should get better prices when you bid it regionally. And we also, it will be better for the environment because you don't have all these different trucks going in and out of your community. So they also offered that Warma would actually handle the calls for customers.
Yes, we would have, we would have.
That's an option to do.
Yep, we would have an office, a staffed office, right? In fact, in fact, Doug will get a kick out of this one. I neg, I negotiated up north that the service providers had to contribute to the cost of the office.
Why, we have issues with ours. There's like an hour wait on the phone, sending an email, you'll get an email back. And, and we're trying to work through it, but there's a lot of issue.
I understand, and I think what, what Attorney Winters already said, the, the devil's in the details, and those details are, are being put into these documents. We have response times, we have callback times, we have revisit times. I have a 24-hour mandate on a, on a unresolved call that the company has to be back to the home within 24 hours, and I have stipulated penalties that I accumulate.
I think it's hydrogen fuel as well.
Yeah.
I think, or it, it could be, I don't know, battery would work, but.
Yeah, so what we, what we do is we, is, is, is we have to tighten that sort of thing up as, as these, these, these contracts, the wording on how disputes are resolved with your citizens is very important. And who they call and what they can expect from that call is equally important.
I think there's Pittsfield Township, City of Ypsilanti.
Township of Ypsilanti, Dexter, Celine. They're all thinking of being in this first round.
Okay.
You guys are great. I always love coming to Ypsilanti.
Attorney Winters asked a question about the villages. So how do you handle that with the villages?
With the villages maybe not being at the same time.
He's, he's, he's asking about the timing of the payments. And I, and I think it, it, you know, eventually it cycles correctly, but there can be some hiccups at the beginning. And I, I think we'd have to work through that. I know townships have a, a whole different program than a city or a village in terms of what you're allowed to do and how you, how you collect money. I mean, I think you're allowed to do just a user fee, right? I think you can impose a, a user fee for the services, but I would, I would leave that.
We're billed monthly per unit.
Yeah, you're billed from, you're billed from the service provider. But see, under this relationship, the entity would be billed. The contract would not be between you and the service provider. You would have a membership agreement with the authority, but the contract would be between the authority and the service provider. So the authority manages the contract on your behalf, but you're a member of the authority who gets the benefit of the contract.
Like Yucca probably, or?
Yucca.
One C U A is a, that's an authority, but.
RasRock, there's a couple.
Huh? That works well. District Library, yeah.
Are we good?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. So Winters, always a pleasure, Ford, always a pleasure.
All right. Next item is the Department of Energy Efficient Block Grant. And we have Beth here, it's on the agenda. And the work session agenda is to apply for this Energy Efficiency Block Grant. And Beth is our grant writer and was.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've never been on the front and center post here. So just want to give some information about the E E C B G. So Energy Efficiency Block Grant Program comes from the DOE. So under the bipartisan infrastructure bill, 16 million was allocated to state and community energy efficiency programs. What the DOE did was take the largest communities in each state and do a automatic allocation. Pardon me. So for Ypsi Township, we've been identified to receive direct funding in the amount of So this is a guaranteed amount if we apply. If you don't apply, you can leave it in the state's coffers, but this is an automatic amount that comes. The biggest question with it is how to use it. So spoke with staff, kind of looked through what the options were, and the program that came up was replacing the HVAC units at the community center. So my understanding is right now, they are very problematic, very inefficient, the way the building is zoned, and they're not functioning well. So I know Mike could speak to that more, but I think everyone's familiar. So I reached out to see if this would qualify, and it is a qualified expense because we would be increasing the efficiency at the community center and also replacing equipment. So the other cool thing that they're doing for the first time is if you are allocated less than 250,000 and you receive a direct allocation and you're going to do equipment replacement or technical assistance, you can apply for a voucher. What that voucher does is you pay, you do your typical bid process, you pay, the voucher comes back in the form of a check. They're taking out the typical federal grant burdens that would be the NEPA review, the section 106, historic preservation review, and then also the reporting and the long-term reporting. So they're trying to make it very efficient, very user-friendly. I know one of the questions that came up was, we wouldn't have to follow Davis Bacon, but you can always pay prevailing wages, especially one that's a township requirement. So there's nothing that says we wouldn't do that. We just don't have to do the monitoring and reporting to the federal government as part of that. So where we're at is we need to file by April 28th, and it's a preliminary, like five-question report saying, yes, we want our money, yes, we're going to try to use the voucher system, and let's go. So in order to do that, we just need a signature and put it in. But I felt it was important to kind of bring it here and talk about any questions. The next thing they'll follow at some point is the question of, we have, we'll have about 100,000 to spend actually on HVAC replacement. The very preliminary numbers we got were 250. And 250,000 would do the entire building. So that will be a board decision whether, you know, you want to post the funds and do the entire project at once, which will be incredibly less expensive, or if you want to split this up somehow.
All right, questions are coming. Sounds good.
Really? Come on, the last.
No, it sounds almost too good to be true. It's great.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's wonderful, and just to add 10% has to go to administration. So we've already kind of taken that out, so we're looking at 101,000 will be directly for the equipment. As usual, we put forward our contract, and then we're looking to split that administration with you, with your administration team to cover your costs and reporting as well.
All right. Sounds good.
All right.
Do you want to do the other two grants real quick? Why, it's on the agenda?
Yeah, do you want to wait? I mean, I'm planning to wait, or do you want to do them now?
Okay, all right, we can wait.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, okay. So you're going to wait till the meeting?
I will, because we, we, you'll need a vote on those. But if you want to do them now, I don't care. I'm prepared. Oh, you're going to let me check out? Hey, I like that.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So let's start.
This is under the agenda, it was number six and seven.
That's correct.
Yes.
All right. Give me one second. Which one is first on there?
The first one is the Midwest Consulting to Provide Drone Survey in the amount of 64,000.
Okay. Okay, so I'm drawing, trying to draw you back here to the entire Lake Loop project. And at first, I want to take just a second to apologize that this kind of got backburnered. But we did have a couple other really cool grant opportunities come up in between. So we did have to shift focus to get the Spark Grant, to get that out, and then also with the congressional discretionary funding, so we needed to package that. So we're trying to get back to the overall TAP project here, which is the connection of all the lake parks. The first step to that, and the first time I need to ask you to spend money, is we need a survey. Without a survey, we physically cannot engineer what those connections will be. So I met with four different engineering companies, couple that have worked with township before, a couple that haven't, and asked them to take a look and give me their best prices. So what we, where we ended up was with Midwestern. They were the lowest cost, but they also were the most efficient in using a drone to survey those areas. So this became urgent to get on the agenda because the price is significantly less when we're in a leaf-off condition. So when the leaves are not in full canopy, they can get in there and survey more efficiently. So they're ready to go within two weeks of signing. As I explained, the TAP is going to require significant contribution from the township and other partners. So this first ask is a big ask, but it will go far in the matching part of funds, ultimately to pull together this entire project. So I just want to take any questions and explain anything further if I need to.
Any comments or questions? Trustee Newman?
You mentioned the 64,000 was going to be a part of the project. Do you have the total cost of the?
No, so, no, I think, I believe you did receive the entire bid. So the engineering portion of the project looks to be around 300,000, but that doesn't include the actual construction. So we wouldn't be able to get realistic estimates until we know what the construction areas are, if that makes sense. So we need to know how to physically connect point A to point B, and without having that survey, is it going to be a metal bridge, a wood bridge, asphalt? So I can't provide that cost yet.
So, okay, so the 64,000 will go a long way.
It's going a long way to start preparing those costs.
Okay.
Right.
It's not part of the cost?
Well, it is part of the overall project cost.
Okay.
So it's called, we're in a pre-engineering phase.
Okay.
So this phase would not be covered by any TAP funds, and typically any grant, most grants do not cover at all pre-engineering. Very rarely can we cover these costs. So what we typically do is take these funds that I'm asking you to expend, and they become our match. So we usually have to match 10%, 20%, 25% of the overall cost. So this will go towards that match ultimately.
So we're not paying the full 64,000?
No, you are. You are paying the full 64,000. But let's say once we, once we get the project fully scoped and the project's 500,000, the township's going to be responsible for 100,000 of that. So this 64 goes towards that.
Okay.
100,000.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Um, we were just, me and Brenda and I were discussing this earlier, and when I first read this, I was like, it's a picture, but it's more than that. It's like a big aerial understanding of like the topographical, you know.
It's the legal description.
Yeah, so even if it, you know, it, it's going to be something that we'll have in our township records for a long, long time, and especially around our lake and our shoreline. You know, like it's certainly 64,000 for this project, but it's going to be a long-lasting piece of information that we can point back to.
You're going to have both the legal document and what's kind of cool here is you'll have the pictures as well, and I think those pictures will actually serve really well over the next couple of years.
Other question? All right. The next item, seven.
All right, item seven is the.
Engineering by Midwestern Consultants, STANTEC for North Bay Park Accessibility Improvement Study.
Yes, so when I originally met with the township, one of the projects that was kind of bugging everyone was recently learning about the shoreline stabilization issues. And that's kind of come from every department, and everyone I've met with is, you know, the lake is, it's the jewel, you know, so what can we do? So I'm really shopping this, this project every, every way that I can. So this one addresses the boardwalk in the bathrooms. And in order to request funds, and this is kind of that oddity, Mr. Newman, in order to request funds, we have to know how much it's going to be. So again, we'll be responsible for any sort of match. These are those pre-engineering funds, working with both STANTEC and Midwestern. On this one, they will provide us with that engineer's estimate as well as the drawings that are necessary to get this project done. So once we apply for funding and have funding in hand, we'll be ready to go. And this, this was an important project to everyone. This is the main entry. This is the entry everyone drives by, everybody sees. DNR will only fund bathrooms once every 40 years. So the design and quality of the bathrooms is very important. So the design and quality of the bathrooms is very important. And, you know, I look at it really as one bite at the apple. So we need, we need to get this part right.
Questions are coming. In order to apply for grants in general, we have to have these preliminary engineering estimates and?
Right. Yeah, it's the pre-engineering and it doesn't, grants don't cover this part.
Right.
You know, grantors want you to be ready to go. So that means you have to expend the funds to get the funds. You know, what I say the positive in this is we are planning to apply for trust fund, but we're not limited. So if we have the drawings ready, if we have the preliminary engineering, we, and another source becomes available, we're ready to go. So we know this is a priority project. We continue to shop it as a priority project. If the trust fund doesn't come through, that doesn't mean we don't have other options. So, you know, we'll keep looking at those options regardless, you know, the plan is the trust fund. But the example would be the Spark Grant, we applied for the shoreline stabilization. We didn't get funded in the first round. Only forty communities out of four hundred did. But by having all that information together, I was able to send it for congressional discretionary funds to three different offices within a couple days, you know? But that information was already put together to go. There's another grant coming up that we're going to apply for on that shoreline stabilization as well. So, you know, having this information at the ready makes us more prepared for what comes down the pipeline.
We're good? Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. All right, so you're set? Anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no other question?
I look forward to seeing you all again soon.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Oh, I think I'm going to cut.
Thank you, Beth. Treasurer Aldridge said it was okay to take the other, since there's a lot of people here from other different departments, and we can save his agenda item for, after we get through this. So the first item is authorizing the division of the planted lots in Watsonia Park subdivision. And I know that Brian McCleary and Jason wrote a letter on it, so.
So we had a property owner for twelve fifty Watson, Michael Lutke, or AKA Frost Cannabis. So they are submitted application, divide the property into two. And because it's planted lots and it breaks up lots, several lots, it has to go through the township board for approval of that. Based on Jason's letter, it complies with the zoning for the township.
Questions or comment? Jason, did you want to say anything? Just about the reason for the split?
Just to add what, and good evening Township Board of Trustees, Jason Icoangeli, the township's planning director. Just to add what Brian was saying, this is the parcel that's currently in entitlement with Frost Cannabis. And the rationale behind the need for the parcel split is based on the licensing requirements from the state of Michigan to separate dispensaries or retail establishments from consumption areas. And the owner of this property who wants to begin those, start those businesses, wants to separate them so that he can apply for both a recreational marijuana license and on the separate parcel closer to the state, state road would be the parcel that he anticipates doing some sort of consumption type business ancillary to the, the retail establishment that would happen on the northern part of the parcel. So if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to, to answer them.
So this would be the first cannabis submission in the new district, which we call the Green District?
It would be, yeah. It's exciting. So it, it shows that the zoning ordinance is working. It's attracting businesses and redevelopment to this area. So this is just down the street from where Pegasus built their concrete plant. And then this would be a brand-new dispensary with a brand-new building with all of the site improvements and utilities. So it is proof that zoning ordinance is, given the necessary time, which this one didn't take a whole lot of time, almost a little over a year to start attracting new development and new business, so.
I have read several articles where they're closing dispensaries because they're kind of saturated in some areas, so very competitive almost.
Yeah, I think marijuana in the state of Michigan has kind of been a race to the bottom, where a lot of people have gotten into the business and have, were wildly successful at the beginning, but now there's so many people growing marijuana that the price of it has gone down almost to nothing. And so businesses are kind of struggling to, you know, that, and there's just so many of them. So we're, we're hoping that Mr. Lutke is, you know, successful at this location, and I think he has some ideas on some different things that he'd like to do to attract business other than just retail sales. I think he'd like to have music nights and events where people could actually partake in marijuana, but I would leave that to him when he comes to the Planning Commission, probably to speak more about that. So I don't want to talk too much about his project because it's, hasn't gone to the Planning Commission just yet, but we think it will on April twenty-fifth. So if you're interested, that, that notice should be going out shortly.
Thank you, Jason. The next item is a request in creation and posting and filling of the maintenance superintendent. Before we do that, I know Denny is here for Galt Village, and it's actually in the budget amendment as well as for, do we have SME? No, it's a, but part of our budget amendment. Denny, I know you went to court on Friday for three hours, and so we awarded the contract at the last meeting. Now we have to designate the funding for it.
Yes, we spent an agonizing three hours in court arguing over the, the two signs that are on the property. I'll get to that. Second, initially though, I wanted to advise that Judge Kunkie, excuse me, entered the order acknowledging the township's award of the bid to Homridge, Inc., and also authorized the township to proceed with entering into a contract for the demolition with Homridge, which I understand will be subject eventually, assuming that you authorized the township to go into that contract that'll be signed by the township supervisor and clerk after being vetted by my office and my partner. The second order, part of which was what caused the three-hour hearing, involves some details that I wanted to include because Mr. Hall, the property owner of GVLC, has been totally uncooperative throughout this whole process. And we anticipated he would continue to be difficult to reach to get signed acknowledgement for certain parts of the contra, of the demolition, which will be necessary. One being, once the asbestos has been remediated by the contractor, it needs to be disposed of properly. And that will take someone to oversee that. And our order provides that the township will be able to oversee that disposal, to make sure it's done correctly and properly and goes to the, to the correct end location. The other thing is the contractor is authorized by this order to essentially deal with all utilities regarding termination of utilities as required, requires the utilities to actually cooperate in that adventure. And also, they are authorized to obtain all necessary permits and provide all required state and federal notices regarding the demolition, as opposed to waiting for Mr. Hall to act on any of that. Thirdly, and this was what the majority of the hearing was about, we had asked that the demolition include the two large signs on the north end of the property. I argued those were structures and that the two thousand and sixteen demolition order, which she affirmed last September, stated all structures might be demolai, demolished. The defense argued that they were non-conforming legal structures. So we, we spent time analyzing Supreme Court decisions on intent as a, as a basis for ending non-conforming legal uses. It, it wound up that the judge said, for now, without prejudice, I'm going to deny your motion to include the signs in the demolition. But our engineer, who we hired, a structural engineer from SME, the same consultant that we've been using, to go out and examine both signs from a structural point of view, hoping that they would conclude that they were structurally unsound. We got some of what we wanted, but the engineer honestly testified that the actual signed structures, the posts in the ground, what have you, they, they are fine. They, they are not distressed to a point where there are any problem. So he couldn't really recommend that they be removed. But he did say the signed faces that are attached to these signs, that the attachments have, have sufficiently eroded or rusted to the point where there's a danger that any one of them might, might fall in any kind of a stressful wind situation. So she did say that those could be removed, leaving for now just the posts. But she said without prejudice, which is significant because she's inviting us to come back later on and argue once again that the actual posts should be removed. So that, that was the, the gravamen, so to speak, of that, most of that three-hour hearing. The order also authorized the, prior to commencement of demolition, Mr. Hall needs to remove his hockey rink, if I remember telling you that, about that before. There's some value in, in that metal alone and, and that hockey rink that he stored in front of the old Measurements, Inc. But if he doesn't do it, then the contractor will gladly remove it and get whatever value they want out of it. So she authorized that. And then lastly, I wanted to make sure that we could record a certified copy of this order because it also contains copies of the December sixteenth, two thousand, December seventeenth, two thousand, or I'm sorry, August seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen demolition order and her September second, twenty twenty-two order confirming that demolition order was still effective. And I wanted to do that as a notice to any prospective individuals, purchasers, what have you. And also because until last Thursday or Friday, Mr. Hall had not paid the twenty twenty property taxes and he was in foreclosure, if he had not paid them by Friday, then the property would have, you know, reverted to the treasurer, the county treasurer. He paid them. So that's not a, that's not an issue, at least for another year. So that pretty well brings us up to where we're at for now, which is, it's up to you to authorize the entry into the contract and to establish the funding for the, for the demolition.
Questions are coming?
Madam Chair?
I have a question. When you said that the demolition includes utilities, what, what exactly did that mean?
Well, in order, in order to get a demolition permit, customarily in, in the township and probably most other municipalities, you, you, you have to arrange for the termination of all utilities, gas, electric, and what have you. Otherwise, the demolition can't proceed safely. So there has to be authority to arrange for the termination of those, those items.
So cutting them off before you?
Before the demolition begins.
Before the demolition? Okay, yeah, all right. I think that makes sense. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I was just, Denny, if you want to, do you want our, us to file the certified copy with the county? Was that your ask?
No, no, I was going to, I was going to get a certified copy from Court Services in Ann Arbor and then walk across the street to the Register of Deeds and, and file it. And then eventually it'll come to you.
Okay, thank you. My other question wasn't appropriate.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you very much, everyone that?
Thank you.
Help bring this to a closure.
I should, I should indicate too that at the hearing last Friday, Planning Director Icoangeli, Chief Building Official Bellers, Tom Greenwood, and the Jason Lafayette from SME and his structural engineer all appeared. Mr. Hall presented nothing again, which is standard.
She gave him every opportunity.
Every opportunity.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to briefly follow up with Denny's comments about the court hearing to let you know that SME will have a proposal at your next regularly scheduled Township Board meeting that will go over their, their services for the environmental inspection process and their time that they would be, you know, the time and the method that they would use onsite for watching Homridge do the actual demolition itself. And in fact, I think it's sitting in my inbox as of late this afternoon. So I will very quickly get that out to everyone, including the Township's Council, so that they can start reviewing that proposal ahead of that, that next regularly scheduled meeting. And then also, just briefly, I know there's been some concern as of late with regard to Lake Vermin and what might happen with regard to Galt Village demolition-wise and what impact that may have. I would say that the county, Evan Pratt's office and the County Water Resources and their team, which includes Workin, has already been onsite in the past, and they've done an initial assessment of, of the building itself to kind of understand and document what, you know, infestation level there might be currently, and there's very little. So their determination was, is that there needs to be a food source, and Galt Village doesn't have any of that food source. So there was very little evidence that there's any kind of infestation, and they looked for various things, and they went into all of the units with flashlights, and they did a very thorough job. But having said that, they also stated that they want to be brought out to Galt Village two weeks in advance of the demolition proceeding so that they can also put in mitigation measures prior to things starting to get real active over there so that they can have traps in place while it's still sedentary and quiet in the event that there is, you know, any residual vermin animals that might be living in the building, et cetera. But there's no evidence of it now, but they will be doing that type of abatement. And they'd like to do it two weeks prior to the start where people are actually onsite moving equipment, things of that nature. So we'll definitely be contacting them in advance of this process to get that, that process started as well.
And the budget amendment, it will come from the general fund, right, for the demolition cost and the SME oversight, contractor oversight?
And I think they shared with you what their initial costs were going to be as a part of that proposal. They just weren't able to get the proper corporate signatures that they needed in order to get it here for tonight. Apparently, they need two people from their corporate body to sign proposals prior to sending them out, and they weren't just able to do that in time. But you will have it probably as early as tomorrow morning to start looking at it in advance of, of that, the next meeting.
And our auditor confirmed with our accountant, who confirmed with us today, that if you have a legal settlement, you cannot use ARPA funds. So that did happen today. We got a, and plus, in order to recoup the dollars once the property is sold, so.
Okay.
And that's on the agenda, under the budget amendment.
And SME will be here at your April eighteenth meeting to go over that proposal along with you.
Can I ask a question about the vermin?
Sure.
So one of the concerns is like those property lines are so close, like there are houses right along there. When we go to look to do some of that pre-vermin work, are we thinking about like maybe some of those traps? If, if a homeowner wanted one there, like I'm worried that they're going to move, and if they move, that's probably the first place they're going to move. So I know probably typically we don't do that, but what's going to happen is going to be something that we're doing that's going to force it. So are we thinking about anything that's going to provide any thought about maybe some of those traps might have to be near those, those property lines, right? So that we don't push the vermin into the neighborhood? That would probably be the first place they'd go?
I can reach out and, and to the county and find out what they're? I can reach out and, and to the county and find out, um, what their anticipated plan is and bring that back to you at your next meeting. Um, cause quite admittedly, I don't know what their plan is for their remediation prior to the start, only I, I do know that they, they want to be there in advance of the demolition work in order to put measures in place to kind of shore it up before it does start happening. Uh, but I can find out what they're anticipating, but it wouldn't surprise me if they do put, you know, traps along the perimeter of the property as well as inside the building for that time, you know, uh, to see what, but I, I will find out and, and report back.
David Sutter, uh, I don't think he's been waiting. We're trying to help and make, uh, a helpful decision.
Understood.
Any other questions are coming? We have the request to approve the creation, posting, and filling of a maintenance superintendent position with the Teamsters Union, Karen Wallen.
As the Board is aware, um, since January 6th, I believe was the date that we lost Mike Hoffmeister, uh, we have been looking at the RSD department and making changes if necessary to see what would best, um, suit the township. One of the positions that became very apparent is that we needed someone who would be in charge of the daily supervision and responsibilities of our maintenance employees. The Residential Services Director, formerly Mike Hoffmeister, was taking on the responsibilities of the day-to-day operations of the maintenance people as, as well as supervising them, which took him away from working on capital improvement projects, things like that. So with meetings with John Hines and Supervisor Stumbo, um, it became evident that we really needed somebody that could be focused on our maintenance employees, giving them the attention and the direction that they need. So with that being said, we proposed that we fill a position, um, as a Teamster position with a salary range of 65 to 68, and I also attached the draft job description. So is there any questions?
Other questions and comments?
This is the first move. Um, I have been questioned about some of the other areas with RSD, and they, they are in the works, um, new updated job descriptions and things are being prepared, and I hope to be able to bring that back to the next board meeting, so.
I have a question. So essentially, uh, his position, his job is being divided, uh, into two different jobs?
We're going back to what used to be, I guess is what I'm, what I'm gonna say. We used to have separate, um, supervisors for the parks and grounds and our maintenance crews, and when those positions became open several years back, they were incorporated under the Residential Services Director's job. Looking back, we feel like there needs to be more, um, day-to-day supervision and, and guidance to our maintenance employees and that it was just too much for the RSD director to have that as part of that job. So, so yes, John, the answer is we're looking at pulling out some of the duties that were previously handled by the RSD director and giving them back to, um, first-line supervision, I guess, to where they can be actually out with the maintenance people and give more direction on a daily basis.
So this isn't an extra position, this, cause these positions were already funded, the second position?
We're refilling positions that have not been funded for a number of years.
So you have savings?
We had two positions, so we're, we're going to one position, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Before Mike Hoffmeister left, the three full-time officials and you met, and we discussed-
Yes.
-the need to fill this position.
And I think Mr. Hoffmeister was also in favor of this. I think he, he realized that, you know, the day-to-day supervision or meeting with them of, of, you know, going around and talking with them about the different parks and grounds and even our custodian employees, that they really didn't have a full-time supervisor and that that was needed, and he was very much in support of this. As is John Hines.
Questions are coming?
I have one, so I was at work like with the unions that are, um, under that because we're changing the way they're supervised, so do you have conversations with them about that change or?
Uh, I had brief conversations with the Teamsters Union today, um, and they're very happy that the position's being refilled. I, um, as far as the union for the other, for the maintenance crews, I don't, I don't see it being a problem. Actually, I think they would probably welcome the more contact with someone on a regular basis.
Cause right now, they, they go to John and I both, and it, and neither one of us are, are actually with them on a daily basis. We talk to them, um, we finally decided that John will sign off on the time off because we were both doing it. And so by having this position will actually, I think, make it easier for-
It'll clarify for the employees who they, who they should be going to.
Well, it's just one person they go to. And they're doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but it's hard to go to two different people. Yes.
Yeah.
We're looking back and actually reinstating positions, and every time someone leaves, we always reevaluate and look at it, and we did that with, um, Mike Hoffmeister as well. I mean, he was there, he actually talked about it before, and so did, um, John Hines. So this is just implementing what they had talked about, what we had been talking about. All right, um, Karen, what else do you have on here? Oh, you stopped funding the Nationwide OBR.
Yes. I'm gonna try to give a brief history of what this is all about. Back in the 1980s, late 1980s, uh, the Township Board, by recommendation of then auditor Dave Williamson, elected to put our seasonal, part-time, temporary, even election workers, I, I was sitting back there and really realized that even our election workers were part of this program at one time, and, um, instead of paying, or them paying into Social Security and us paying into Social Security for them, as a government entity, we had the ability to put them in this OBR account through, and it was originally PepsiCo, I believe was the name of it years ago, now Nationwide. And basically what this is, is it's the 6.2% that normally comes out of everybody's payroll for Social Security. That 6.2% was put into a fixed account at Nationwide for them. Uh, and then it was meant to be somewhat of a, like a retirement fund for them. We used to have a number of seasonal employees, and I'm talking 60 to 80 people. So at that point, um, it was probably financially beneficial for the township to do this. Things have changed, not only in our numbers, but IRS ruling has come down and made the fiduciary responsibility for these type of funds, well, me, which doesn't really make me very happy. Um, you know, there's lots of money there, and for me to be financial, you know, responsible for that, but anyway, um, we recently found out that we are fiduciary responsibility for the, for these accounts. And, um, as I mentioned earlier to the three full-time officials, I will be bringing something back along with, um, Javon and Neil, um, recommendation on making some changes there, but that's later. These funds, we have over a thousand of these funds sitting there. A lot of these funds have less than $50 in them, and they're for people that may have worked one or two times at an election or whatever, and there's money sent in these accounts. We have no idea where these people are at, even if a lot of them are even still living. Um, so we are requesting that we go back and we treat all employees, whether they be seasonal, temporary, election workers, actually, they stopped doing a number of years ago, but, um, all employees the same by taking Social Security, period, um, instead of having money in these accounts. Uh, what this had become with a lot of our seasonal employees is another way for them to, well, save money through the year because of course the 6.2% was put into this account. The only way they could get the money out was if they left our employment. So every season, at the end of the season, they would contact us, we would have to have them contact Nationwide, they would have to have a form sent to them, they would then have to come back into the HR department, we would have to sign off on it saying, yeah, they're no longer on our payrolls at this point. They would get their money sent to them, minus taxes taken out, and then when they, if they came back the following year, we were re-enrolling them again. So payroll would have to set them up again, HR would have to do paperwork with them again, and it would all start over again. And it was just a, a circle every year. They would withdraw it, we'd reset them up, withdraw it, reset them up. This is not reducing their pay at all, okay? 6.2% is coming out of their salary, has been all this time, it's just where it's going versus going into Social Security, it had been going into Nationwide. We are now recommending that everybody be back on Social Security versus the Nationwide. Now, the accounts that are there, the thousand some accounts, um, they will remain there, and people will still have the ability, um, to contact us, and, and we do get those calls. Um, we, before last, I got a call from somebody who worked for us in 1992, I believe it was, they thought. Well, our electronic records don't go back that far, so Andy and I were literally in payroll records, trying to go back through books, on top of books, trying to find out when this person worked for us, when their last day was with us, so that they could get their $130 out of this account. So, I mean, it's just a lot of time-consuming work for both payroll and I, um, and the benefit is just not there anymore. That may have been there due to IRS law changes and things like that. So, that being said, we are requesting, um, to stop funding Nationwide and that the 6.2% that comes out of their salary go into Social Security, just like everyone else. And I hope that was, I hope you were able to understand that. I know it's kind of crazy.
I understood it, yeah.
So.
Madam Chair, yes. Um, I think, I believe you said the people who did work seasonal, they still are eligible for that money?
Yes. Yes, that is still their funds, and they can still get it. And anybody who maybe have come back this year that have funds there, that didn't withdraw their funds, at the end of the season, they can request that we put in a termination date and they can, they can get those funds back. That is their money. I did go on a few months back just to see, just look, look at the names. Um, up until recently, I didn't even have electronic access as to who these people were. And I went online and some of the names I didn't even know, and, I mean, I've been here since 92, and they were actually in the program before 92. So, and like I said, there's probably several of them that are no longer even living, and the money is there, and they never even knew it. So.
Yeah, we used to have at least 50 seasonals at one time-
Yes.
-that participated in it, and we don't, I mean, we barely could get 20 now. It's a, so it's dramatically changed, and how many people participated?
I had a question.
Sure.
You, you've already kind of touched on it, but I guess I'll just ask, and, um, uh, first off, uh, your due diligence is great, so thank you for, for this. Um, and I think this will be beneficial, um, just my initial thoughts, but with those, um, those older, uh, accounts, I guess, where you, we're not even sure if folks are still with us, uh, is there any mechanism that we can put in place to try to see about that or figure out a way to try to get people their money or anything? I don't know.
Well, anyone who has an account with Nationwide, um, gets a quarterly statement.
Yeah.
So Nationwide has at some point continuously tried to reach out to the last known address of these people. Situation being that, you know, people have moved. Um, I've gotten calls from people that worked here as a seasonal, and now they live in California, and so unless they've put in a change of address with Nationwide, you know, we would have no way of, of reaching them. Um, I mean, we can look at, because they have dates of birth and things like that on there, I mean, we could look at that and, on some of the older ones and, and realize that they're probably gone, but-
Yeah.
I, I don't know how we would really do it, right?
Yeah, no, I, I know it's, it's, it might be a futile, uh, exercise, but if, if we could, uh, put, you know, some, some effort toward that, you never know, this might be a, I, this might be, this might come as a blessing to somebody, you know, you never know.
Right, right. We definitely could.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I think that idea is helpful in that it, it also starts to take that responsibility of the work that you guys are having to do out of it, right? So even if Nationwide's handling it, you guys are still doing work if they decide to access it. So if we could try to clean that up, then it does take some work off of you, um, would help too, a blessing. So I think that would be a good-
No, and we've talked actually about making a project of going in and pulling the list of names and then going back into our, at least our electric, electronic payroll files and finding out termination dates of some of the people and going ahead and, and, you know, being active with putting dates in the system already so that if by chance they do call Nationwide, um, that's already there for them, they, they don't have to take another step in, you know, contacting us, that it's already there. Um, it's just, um, it's a time-consuming project.
May I say one more thing?
Of course.
Thank you. So, uh, with that, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I trust your wisdom, so, uh, but would it be possible to, um, once this list has been, you know, put together, could that be advertised, uh, to say, hey, uh, if you work for the township during these dates, contact, um, Nationwide? Uh, is that, is that, you know, is that possible?
We can look into it.
Yeah.
Some type of public notice or something, we could look into that.
Well, they don't have to cash it in yet, though.
No, they don't. No, I mean, they can, you know, it is in a fixed account, so it is making a little bit of money. Um, so, you know, some people would just soon leave it there and see how much money it's gonna make for them. So. I just, Michael, I'm sorry, I just thought of something that I was supposed to mention on the item before this. On the draft job description, there was one item that, um, Mike Serenan actually asked if we could add in addition to the training records and stuff, that they actually keep track of safety training as well. So, um, that would be the only change in the job description, is that I would add that they would also be responsible for keeping track of training, or safety training, um, and making sure that the employees actually get the safety training that's needed for them. Sorry, I don't like to jump back, but.
All right, thank you. The next item is the wastewater, I mean, water sewer subsidy income levels. As we discussed at the last work session, um, we've been doing $20 bi-annually for residents who qualify, and so this would take it from 20 to 40. This was prompted because Cory in our office talks to a lot of the residents, and they said it's just not enough to help. So we talked about this at the last meeting, this puts it, um, into action if the Board approves. Is there any questions on it? Is there any questions on it? Okay, the next one is the seventy-five dollar stipend for all people who serve on every committee in the township. We discussed this at the last work session and this just puts it into board action. We talked about the next item. Budget amendment number four. We have an updated budget amendment.
The budget amendment just goes over stipends for the boarding commissioners that we just talked about, a PTO payout, the water budget, or the water and sewer hardship rebates is also in there. The general operating fund for, this is the blight removal for Galt Village, that will include the Homridge. And then right below that is also the estimate that we've given from SME. Denny and Jason, you know, referred to the contract will come back next time. BSR two, again, these are both budget items that Beth and Nat talked about, the Ford Lake Loop area in North Bay Park. Environmental Services Fund, I believe we were just requested additional funding for the chipping service. I know all the guys have been, and gals have been working really hard to get the chipping done, and this is going to allow for the contractor to extend their time with us. And then another PTO payout from the fourteen B District Court.
Just as a chipping update, there is, they're in Sugarbrook, the rain came again. Of course, a lot of it's weather dependent, but our, our team was in Sugarbrook as well as the contractor. They also were Grove Road eyed bomber, that's the last subdivision to be done. And then the contractor is going to go out with the big grappler. It's automated, so they don't have to pull the branches like our team to, we have two teams still working and the contractor trying to get it up. And I was reminded that the last time there was a really bad storm, we had three chippers, three trucks, and it took us three months. So we're, we are doing better than the last storm and residents are very thankful and appreciative for the work that's being done because the piles are enormous in some of the homes and out in the country. It's very expansive, but they had a lot of trees down. So normally it would just be branches, but we're, it's complete tree removals what they're doing except for the trunks that are six inches or less. So I, I can't say enough about our team and this is not what we do. We do the parks and grounds and compost site, mowing of the facilities, maintenance, but chipping is not something we do. And it's because of injury. That was the number one reason why we stopped doing it. So the three full-time officials were talking about next year, just budgeting for storm removal by a contractor. Because right now, our teams are working, doing chipping and they're not able to get into the parks. We did, we have, we hired seasonals to help with it. So we do have a small team working in the parks to get everything removed from the parks and get the parks ready for opening up. And the compost site opened up as well this week, full-time. So they're amazing, group of employees, proud to work beside them. And I, it's clear that this is not the business we're in because of the equipment that the other team has is just much more efficient, much more safer, and a lot less labor-intensive. So hopefully we can continue and this should finish up the township. I'm not going to say, I thought it was going to be this week, I'm not going to say anything because storms come, tornadoes come, I'm not, so they'll keep working until it gets done. But we're a lot farther ahead than we were. Authorization and bids, we have requests to approve from, it was a website committee, is that right? For a photographer for the township and a drone person, correct?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the group that's been working on our website, which previously was Mike Hoffmeister before he left, but Director John Hines, Travis, McGoole, Becky from IT and myself, have been working on the website a long time. Just to bring you guys up to speed on that, we've recently been meeting with each individual department to go over their new webpage, what that looks like, if we omitted something that we shouldn't have, making sure if there are any legal requirements for certain things, like an example of that is like the hydro dam has to list, what is it, Mike? Like the recreational something on their page. And so just making sure we, you know, dot all of our i's and cross our t's. But in the new website, we've discovered we just don't have a lot of great photo stock of our beautiful township as well as our employees. We're going to have a picture day that we'll give everyone great warning for. And so we'll have updated photo headshots on, available. And the person that we're recommending is one of the only people who applied, there were six applicants, if I, is that right? Six that we reviewed. And he was actually certified with his drone, you have to be FAA certified to utilize one. And he had great, a great portfolio, lots of good photos that are in your packet. Can you scroll down, Lise, if you don't mind? I think we included. So he's worked for Eastern, he's done photos for U of M. You can see he actually already captured some of our Ford Lake photos for Eagle Crest. So they're really nice photos. He is not a township resident currently, but he previously lived here and so has a lot of knowledge of our community and we felt really positive about him. So if anyone has questions, be happy to answer them.
I have a question, Madam Chair. How often would we use them? Just for special events, for the newsletter, I'm assuming?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we are going to use them for the specific things that I mentioned, like just getting photos of our township, the headshots. And then also in our RFP, we included that we'd like them to be available for events that we might host, like the Rosie the Riveter Show.
Jazz Fest.
Jazz Fest, anything like that. So there, there is language in the contract, which I know was sent to attorney winners, I don't know if you've had a chance to review it yet, Doug. But we do expect and want them to be available for certain special events.
And how about Veterans Day out there, which I would thought would be great, to get some shots? I don't know if we ever got some good shots out there on their celebration. We could use them on that.
Questions are coming. Your name will go on to the request to accept a proposal from OMA for air dial service and, I, we can't make this up. This emergency call boxes for each of the fire stations, along with an alarm system at the hydro station. Travis?
Essentially, this is just to replace old technology with new technology for our emergency lines. Each fire station has a call box on the outside or in the vestibule. And when you pick it up, it automatically dials. What we want to do is make sure that that works. We've had challenges with some of the old copper lines that we dedicated just for that service. And we're just bringing into more modern technology, which is what the FCC is strongly advising on since copper is kind of going away.
At a lesser cost.
It's a little bit less, yeah.
Two seventy to one eighty-nine.
Yeah, the fire department pays for an additional line that we're dropping. So there's definitely going to be a savings there for that. And then the other ones, it's a couple of bucks a month.
Seven dollars. Questions or comments? And then the Looking Good Lawn was requested to be removed from the agenda. It is in the electronic packets.
Yeah, it'll come back at the next meeting. And I apologize for any confusion on that. So the third item under authorization and bids, if you don't have, I think everyone up here has that on their thing, and again, that was removed. The agenda on the website is updated, but it, we'll take it out of the packet. My apologies.
Stan, Community Resource Center. I thought I did, Mike. Richmond? Here. There's a request to seek bids for construction services for inspection of the spillway gates and concrete repairs at the hydro station, and this will come back to the Township Board for formal approval.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mike Serenan over the hydro station. So in the request for going out to bid is to address some aging and spalling concrete on the top of the concrete spillway and detailed inspection of the six sluice gates that we use for our primary means of regulating the lake level when the turbines aren't running. This cost is quite expensive. The engineering estimates get ranged from about four hundred thousand to one point one million. So we budgeted last year five hundred thousand and we are working, trying to get funding through grants and other sources to help cover this cost. It is required. We did our safety inspection in twenty twenty and through that independent consultant along with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, they said we needed to provide this detailed inspection within a few years. So we were trying to do it last year, but we didn't get the bid spec done in time. So we're kind of cutting it close now, going into the construction season. So hopefully we'll have something ready and back to you guys in a month or so? No, two months. And hope we'll have a project in end of July, early August.
Questions are coming? It'll be brought back to the board.
Yes, well, yeah, exactly.
If the total cost of a million is, is the total cost, will that be paid for over time or in one year?
So at this point, we're hoping to pay for it through the two-five-two fund. If it comes in at eight hundred thousand, we'll have just enough money in the fund to pay for it without extra support. We are filing for a grant through the county and this might be an eligible project through ARPA funds. So I haven't heard on that aspect of it yet. So if we don't get those, we're going to work hard to secure the funds because this is a, basically a safety matter that has to be addressed to stay compliant with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
And at most, you, we're talking maybe two hundred thousand, that's if it's a million.
Yeah, if all goes well and we get one for, you know, four hundred thousand, that would be a great day.
Okay.
And if, you know, there's still some things that could happen with, with bids that we may not be able to accept them because of timelines, or they, if we don't like what comes back, we can always try again.
And so this is something that's pretty urgent.
Yeah, so, you know, a lot of it goes back to the age. The sluice gates are original to the project from the nineteen thirties. So the, the regulatory body likes, would like us to dive deep into those gates to see if they're still structurally sound and, you know, show up, because there's, we don't have a lot of information on them. So the historical documents don't include how they were designed, the dimensions, how thickness of the, excuse me, the metal is. So that is, a lot of those questions are going to be addressed through this process.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. The last item on the agenda is a community, at six forty-five, Community Resource General Use Policy, Stan?
Okay, so in our last board meeting, the board directed trustee Swanson and I to develop some kind of a general building use draft policy based on incident that we're all familiar with and other concerns. So last week, I began that process. The supervisor and, and John Hines were kind enough to provide me with some templates that are used at the community center as a guideline to, to try and put something together. So Debbie and I did meet last week, also invited in Lori, Robin Hines, and Julianne. Just to get a different perspective from other people and try to be all-inclusive in this. So what you have in front of you is a draft of a general use policy as it relates to the Community Resource Center in West Willow on Tyler Road. It follows in large part what is already in place, again, at the community center, where changes needed to be made that pertain directly to that building they were made. And in the short of it, it simply is trying to make sure that as a township-owned building, that we are more cognizant of what's taking place within the confines of those four walls and on the property. So that it could be used in a manner in which we hope it is used for the community, not just one neighborhood, but for the entire community. But predominantly, it's going to be used by the same association. It's a four-page document along with the application fee, should an outside group want to do that. I would just ask and let Debbie add, but I would just ask that you take it over the intervening two weeks, mark it up, make any changes or suggestions that you see, and just email those back to me. And then I'll bring back a document in two weeks that we have a little bit more refinement of and then can decide whether we want to move forward with it or not. But certainly I can answer any questions you have tonight, and then I'm sure Debbie can do that as well or add what she would like on the, on this topic.
I'm sure either, either one could answer. Is, is the building currently patlocked or?
It is not. It is open. The honest answer, John, is we don't know how many keys are out there and who has those keys. We have no honest idea of who's using it on a daily basis and for what purposes, although, I'll just leave it at that, yeah. It's not locked.
Thank you.
It's not unlocked, though. I mean, it's locked, people have a key to, I just want to pitch that. We're also in the, in the process of trying to get, we do have three quotes for the roof. We need the siding and, what was the other thing? Chimney removal, siding and windows. So we, we were hoping to do it sooner than now, but I think it's a good time to actually complete those renovations during this time period that we're looking at something that's totally new and changing. And I also, I think we should meet with residents too that use it at some point, once we get something board's comfortable with.
And, and so the rest of the board knows, that was a question I was asked. Have you met with the association? My response is which group? I, I don't think you can meet with one or the other right now because they have their own issues taking place. And if we were to meet with one without the other, it would appear that we're solidifying one group over the other, and I just don't think you can do that. And I'm not sure that they want to meet together at the same time right now anyways, so. So just look at it. Certainly make any critiques, corrections, changes, suggestions. The entire intent behind this is just to make sure that we have an idea and, and a modicum better than we do of control on our own buildings so that we know it's what, what takes place. Because at the end of the day, we're liable for anything that occurs there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Eldrich, I, I did have a question here, and I've only
Mr. Eldridge, I did have a question here and I've only glanced at it since I've gotten this draft document, but I, in lieu of what we, you know, heard at our last meeting, what I'm concerned about primarily centers around the potential for violence. And do we have anything in here that would speak to the prohibition of weapons or anything like that that could be brought onto the premises? Is there a general policy that speaks to that here?
I thought there was in here, Ryan, but if there's not, that's a good suggestion.
I've only skimmed it while we've been sitting here, so it could be buried in here, but I didn't see it clearly pop out.
I will make sure to read through it and add that, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I also, only because Stan was going, said that we had a chance to review it and come back, but not only that, I think it's so important of whoever rents that building, there has to be some type of manner of conduct and behavior. Because that leads to other problems, okay? So, and then I see, I don't really see the key issues. Whoever's, well, the part about leasing, I think someone has to take the responsibility to hold that key, not let it go all over, if it's going all over the community. There has to be one person or two persons just designated to get in that interest, whether you're renting it, leasing it, borrowing it, whatever. And then also, if it's not attending to the service that is free, it's a stipulated charge. I think you charge out the township at the other community center. If they go over the hours, if they're having a party or event or shower, if they go over the hours, I think your policy is, because I know somebody that was renting, one of the pastors, and they were concerned if they go over the hours, did they have to pay? And I think it's in that lease. So why wouldn't it be in this lease? And I'm not talking about the West Willow Association or anybody that you give it to a free, but they use it for something else. I don't think they should have the ability to stay all night long, okay? If they're scheduled for four hours, they should stay there for four hours. From whatever the other lease says about the overtime, if it's not a free situation, it should follow. It should be standard and I don't think it's in here. It says, it actually says something about the township, the quota price or something like that or negotiated price if they're over the hours. I think this is like on the first or second page, I already mentioned that to Stan, right? That they would come back to the township for some type of decision. So if you're doing it out on Holmes Road, I think you gotta do it everywhere. And I'm not talking about people who get freebies or organizations get freebies, I 'm talking about if you're actually renting the place. I think there should be a stipulation on if they're scheduled for four hours and they go over the hours, I think it should be set in a policy, how much you charge. So there's no hidden costs. You know, you can't charge one person this and charge the other person that, you know what I mean? So just something to talk about, I know we're going to talk about it again, okay?
Yeah, so yeah, again, just please send all those comments there. Good to hear, I appreciate it greatly.
Yeah, and I would just add that one of the things we were looking at was consistency across the township properties and how they were handled, but there were several different documents. So trustee Hunter's concern, what I would say is that that is a, if that, I don't know that we saw that in any of the other documents for any of the properties. So I think, given the security stuff that we've done with the courts, if we're looking at that, that may be something that has to be added, not just to this particular property, but something that we look at for language for all township properties. Because I don't recall seeing that specific item, but I wouldn't want to single out this particular property for something if we think it's a good idea, because we were working really hard to make sure, we're trying to be consistent across properties. So I think that's what we, I think that's what we'd want to do, given the work and the conversations that we had.
Okay, five-minute break. 6:55, 6:55, 6:55, 6:55, 6:55, 6:55, 6:55, 6:55.